Marcus Bush.
Rory Lunt.
Tom Partridge. Eric. Eric Johnson's online.
Amy Hassan.
Yeah, Anthony Graves, Brittany Corla. Taylor Singh.
Tom Latola.
Rory Myers. Kirsten Myers, Edie Myers, Miss Myers.
Welcome.
Welcome. Does anybody have any questions on the tax levy? Eric Manley will leave the meeting open for a few minutes and enjoy our best of snacks.
I got two private snacks.
Chris Pratt.
Chris Pratt.
That's awesome.
No, she's blessed.
That bunch was you.
She's awesome.
Well, as much as Vaughn wanted to come to the board meeting tonight, he opted to go pick up Olive Garden for her ancient birthday.
Well, I suppose.
He was like, ooh, I think I should probably go pick it up. And then he's like, oh, thanks for the sacrifice.
Yes, yes. Thanks to the big bros.
One box. They just like to complete.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
And a little bigger shoe.
I thought.
Oh, yeah. JD and her. I was going to print out and if anybody said anything, I was like, goodness. But I forgot. And no one really asked. One person did. Well, actually, two of my friends did. And I'm like, I just explained. I'm like, okay, that's all there.
That's true. Right.
Yeah, we're talking about counting this raise of five percent in a year or a couple of years as opposed to one day.
Right.
Yep. It's probably really can't spread that out if you don't own it that way.
Yeah.
Can take a reference to go back.
Yes.
Nope.
Well, I think you're kind of trying to save our comments down. My posts are the ones to.
It did.
And then you just say. I want to go right over the information on it and just say, here's what it is.
Yeah.
Showing us.
Showing you.
And if you just. And if you read the papers, there's been dozens of every tax body out there, out there is doing the same thing because DAB's going up.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there was all black.
Leon.
They could make one, maybe thousands of dollars off of those.
Yeah. Yeah, the winner just deals the.
Winner, the deal is the artist, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. It is. I still want to be, because I like my photos. And economics, that's what I made.
There you are. Hi.
Amy.
Sorry, Amy. We'll tell you personally before we're eating.
Yeah, I was sitting next to you.
I tried.
Sorry. We're in the middle of the tax levy hearing so far nobody has had any comments.
Okay, thank you.
So easy. Are you guys telling top?
Are you rearranging stuff so? So positive. Don't worry about me. I can get back to the hotel. Well, I did get back to the hotel, but I followed, I followed the herd and then went up these steps. I ended up on the other side of Michigan. I just see a hotel, all the roads were blocked. So I had to walk down. So we were late, so we're dry and bad up. What do you call that? Instead of the eye.
Yeah, because it's all.
So, you know, by the time, because it was warm up there, I had my coat, my little coat. I walk in and Dave Mike looks at me.
I'll do one.
Yeah, I think one.
I'll do the seven, seven, and the rubber.
Yes. I didn't feel unsafe. You know, I'm just like looking.
Did I state them?
Eighty years.
No, no.
I'll do. Okay.
Actually.
That's our idea.
No, that's okay. And number nine is this script.
Yes, I also said that. Laura just asked Kyle to say that.
Hey, Eric.
Marcus didn't drop reach out to you.
Yeah, okay. Hey, Eric.
Those are great. And if she's nice, then could you start too?
Okay, hey, yes, when we open up the meeting, the actual meeting, we're going to have the call order, roll call, pledge allegiance, and then before good news, we're going to do the consent agenda and action items one and nine on the other part. And then that way the infirmed can leave. All right, okay.
You mean our savior.
Yes. You said you may on us, really. You know, not all here on work day.
I might, my biggest thing.
Uh-oh. Yeah, everybody gonna look at each other. Um, that's where they are tomorrow. What's like, where are you here? I'm thinking it.
You were gone. I did register. I'm in illusion tomorrow.
She called me on Friday. I don't know how she got connected with me, but I got a phone call from the gal on Friday. Saying when they were going to be here and where do they step in. So I'm like, hello, what time you going to be in? Before seven thirty. So I said, well, I said door five on the north side of the building. I said, I'll be at that door.
Oh, thank you.
So, yeah, thank you. So I'm like, well, I guess that'll be me because I'm here at that time. Right. The guy that I'm, Aaron, that I met with, um, he sits there from Missouri and we're just helping out the Illinois crew.
All right, I entertain a motion to close the tax levy hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Talk amongst yourselves.
Good talk, good talk.
For the Mississippi. He was homeschooled until this year. Uh, my mom, siblings and I go to the snowboard every winter and have snowball bars. So it seems like it's pretty awesome family. Um, we also asked our teachers about Mr. Archer. Mrs. Martin said Archer consistently puts forth effort during reading class. He is focused and ready to learn. He's willing, he willingly participates during lessons with a positive attitude and respectful manner. He shows kindness and respect to his peers and adults. Every day he leaves class saying, "Thank you for the lessons, Mrs. Martin." Archer's hard work and politeness make him an absolute joy to have in class. Archer makes everyone better. He is a model student and she feels grateful to have him in his class. Miss Fight, Archer comes in the classroom every morning with a smile on his face followed by a polite greeting. He does what he needs to do without hesitation and always puts forth his best effort. He is a great leader in the classroom. Every day he is willing to help others, whether it be an assignment or a daily task. He actively participates in class discussion, discussions and politely shares his thoughts and ideas. He is such a great addition to the classroom and I'm so lucky to have him. Mrs. Jones, Archer is a wonderful addition to our fifth grade class this year. Archer is always an active participant during class. He always helps to lead his classroom group discussions to help further their thinking and understanding. And is a great active listener to his classmates when they are having the opportunity to share their thoughts and opinions within their groups. He is a wonderful role model to his classmates. Congratulations, Archer. Miss Daywoman, Archer comes to class every day with a smile on his face and a willingness to give his best effort. Whether it's working on his skills during individual activities or participating in team sports, he shows a level of enthusiasm and dedication that is contagious to everyone around him. His focus on improving his abilities and supporting his classmates makes him an excellent role model for others. In addition to his athleticism, Archer is incredibly respectful, disciplined and focused during class. He listens attentively, follows instructions and works hard to maintain a great balance between having fun and doing his best. Congratulations, Archer. Mrs. Hicks, as a new student this year, Archer has been outstanding. He is very musical and shows interest in learning new themes. He never shies away from learning instruments that the other students are familiar with and catches on quickly. Archer is honest and demonstrates fairness to all of his classmates. I know I can count on him to look out for others and be a willing partner when we work in small groups. I'm glad I get one year to be part of his musical journey. Congratulations. And lastly, Mrs. Meyer, Archer has been a wonderful addition to Andalusia this year. He is a positive leader at our school for his peers and our younger students. He is respectful, polite and kind. He can always be found with a smile on his face and a warm hello in the hallways. Archer has recently been working to buddy up with some third grade math students to give them a little help and a boost of confidence. His interactions with them show what a caring person he is as he can often be heard saying, "Good job." Did you understand how he did that? Archer is the kindest student we love to have, leading by example. We are lucky to have him in Andalusia. Andalusia, sorry. So, everyone, Archer.
No, you're fine. I just, so then they want to work up here in the background.
And you can see, oh, there's a whole folder for your Archer. I'm gonna put it in a folder so you can keep all together.
My pleasure to interview, Ms. Eden Myers. Come on up and Eden's birthday today.
Happy birthday!
Yes, she gets recognized on her birthday. Eden Myers is our high school student of the month. She is a senior at Rock Ridge High School. Daughter of Kirsten and Missy Myers, also got Sister Rory here. And she said that Brother Vaughn is picking up Olive Garden takeout for dinner, so we'll all be over. We'll all be over. Yeah, Griffin as well. Griffin is the other sister as well. Uh, Eden reports that band and choir are her favorite classes. She's a talented musician and vocalist who's been selected to be a member of the ILMBA All-State Honor Choir next month. That's done by audition and then also the district festival. She also participates on the golf team, Scholastic Bowl, and has been in numerous Rock Ridge Theater performances while in high school. Outside of school, Eden participates in the Metro Arts Youth Apprenticeship Program with Quad City Arts during the summertime. She loves to draw, sing, crochet and act. Staff members had the following to say about Eden's selection this month. First off, Mrs. Nease, social studies teacher, said Eden Myers is very independent and introverted. She holds steadfast to her political ideologies. While she performs well academically in American government, her true passion is the arts. After having witnessed Eden take on the personas of Morticia Adams and Dorothy Gale onstage, that's where Eden truly shines like a diamond. Uh, her vocal range and dramatic expression are absolute gifts. And personally, Ms. Nease said, "I have deep appreciation for the additional outside theater groups which she performs as well." She was also great in nurturing her little dog, Toto. Mrs. Nease's dog played Toto when they did Wizard of Oz last, last year? Yeah, last year. I was tracking time. Band and theater director, Mr. Jake Walker, said Eden has been a great student to work with over the last six years. Her dedication to the band and skills as a flautist have been a huge help to that group. But all the groups and activities I work with here at Rock Ridge Theater is where her contributions are felt the most. Eden's a true craftsman with her approach to the roles she plays, often coming up with great ideas that I hadn't even thought of. She's played everything from Dorothy in Oz to Morticia in the Addams Family, to most recently a real-life dial painter fighting for justice in Radium Girls. Her freshman year, she even did her first play with a two-foot-tall mask strapped to her face and a live snake wrapped around her arm. Uh, and still came back for more. In addition to her work at Rock Ridge, Eden has also performed with a number of shows outside of school. We're all excited to see what she does with theater behind high school and wish her the best. Uh, Ms. Cope, English teacher, said Eden is polite, kind and caring individual who's a great asset to Rock Ridge. Her contributions to the music and theater departments are unparalleled. Uh, Mr. O'Neil, who's our Spanish teacher and a fellow Music Guild actor, said Eden is an excellent student for selection for student of the month. She's managed to negotiate time between band, show choir, ILMBA, shows at the Music Guild and Radium Girls. She's kind, thoughtful and courteous. Uh, art teacher, Mrs. Densberger, said Eden is talented in so many fields. She succeeds in everything in art and does it with style and a calm demeanor. Hopefully we'll see Eden on Broadway someday. Shelby Hatchell, who is our English teacher, said Eden has been a constant source of positive energy in dual-credit English. She always comes to class with an upbeat attitude which is very contagious. She's become a resource to her classmates where they know they can ask her questions about any of the assignments or projects. And finally, uh, Mrs. Graves, her golf coach and our assistant principal, said Eden has been a dedicated member of our golf team for four years. She's consistently showed up, worked hard, supported her team. Eden has a unique ability to brighten everybody's day with her talent, positivity and work ethic. I'm excited to see what she will continue to achieve. Lots of amazing things. Um, Eden has been accepted into the prestigious American Musical and Dramatic Academy, which has campuses in New York City and Los Angeles. So we're excited for that opportunity if she chooses to pursue that and hopes to study music theater, as you could probably guess. Yeah, mom and dad are terrified of that, but it's a great honor. You had to audition to be accepted into that program, so congratulations.
Only 25% of people, uh, are accepted and they only take around 300 students a year.
Fabulous. What a great honor. What a great talent. So, Eden Myers. Oh, Mr. LaTolla, he's got it.
Got it.
Yep, so we'll just turn that way and get with Mr. LaTolla. Oh, I guess we'll turn all that so we can do that. There we go. There you go. That's yours. Congratulations.
All right, Curtis, you up on the ILMBA?
I'm sure I'm golfing.
Oh, I missed it.
Yeah, all right. So we're just recognizing the girls' golf team. Uh, they won their fourth straight conference championship this year. Uh, they won their first sectional title as well. Um, they take, they take the top three teams. This is the first time they've placed first at sectionals in school history. And then this is the second time for the second row, second year in a row that they made it to state. We had two individuals that went on to play the second day. Anna placed 50th and Olivia placed 83rd. So, congratulations to them.
Um, ILMBA All-State announced their, ILMBA announced their All-State selections. Um, as we just said, Eden's been selected to sing in the ILMBA Honors All-State Choir. That's the top concert choir. Peyton Malick was selected to sing in the ILMBA All-State Vocal Jazz Ensemble. We haven't had anybody in this ensemble for quite some time. Um, there are only 24 voices selected for this group. Uh, so there's only six tenors from the entire state and Peyton is one of those six. Um, so we're very proud of him for that. Um, and Olivia Brown was selected to sing, uh, this is the inaugural, inaugural ILMBA Junior High All-State Choir. So she's gonna represent Rock Ridge. Um, and then we did just get notification that five of our sixth graders were selected as well. And I'll get that in for next month. Um, and then the Doring Festival is the next one there. Uh, that's, this is at Luther College. It's gonna be in January and we've got a quartet in. Uh, so Eden Myers, Lily Von Sek, Peyton Malick and Jackson Hofer. And I will be traveling to Luther College for the Doring Festival in January. Uh, Rock Island ROE Employees of the Month this month are Mr. L for the high school. Uh, Daniel Tate's for Taylor Ridge Elementary, Lori Meyer for Long Island City Elementary, Rebecca Schroeder for Andalusia Elementary. So congratulations.
All right. If you're a script for good news, this is a great time. Excellent. Or you're welcome to stay for a week.
Do you wanna stay for your birthday? Are you sure?
Congratulations.
All right, at this time, we open the floor up for public comment. Signal, just not read that long statement and move right on. Okay, uh, next up, presentation.
All right.
This is for that, the floor is yours.
I did give you guys a new copy of the presentation as well. Uh, originally when I made my presentation, I didn't have any of the winter map data, but we took the math, uh, school, the math test yesterday, last week.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, so we took it last week, so I do have some more data to share, um, and I, that's in the new presentation. So. And so, like, Marcus tried to help, he'll be able to try to keep it short, but I have a lot of data. I get, sometimes I ramble, so I will try not to ramble on the data because it is interesting, but. So, I'm gonna just start with our goals team. So our goals team is my, myself, Mrs. Graves, Mrs. Ray's our counselor, Kristi Troygan, our enrichness, and then Dana Wright, um, our sixth grade ELLA teacher. I have four different goals for the year, reading, math, SEL. And I have a career in college readiness, one that's kind of a loose goal. It's more of one that we're working towards. I've got some ideas of things I wanna do this year, but it's not as trackable as the others data-wise. Um, so I wanna start with our reading goal. So, as I start talking about the reading goal, there's a couple of different numbers that I'm gonna talk about, and so I'm gonna explain that as we go. So, by spring of 2025, 80% of Rock Ridge junior high students will be performing at the 60th percentile on the NWA reading map assessment. So, in that goal, there's percents and percentiles. So 80% is just the percentage of students that we want to meet that goal. But then the 60th percentile is the number of students, or the, the score we want the students to perform at. So, when you look at the math score, students are given a score that is a red score. And it's a nationally normed assessment and, um, they're ranked basically, and that's where that percentile is. So for the 60th percentile, it basically means that they're performing better than 60% of their peers. Now, that number of how we got to 60th percentile is based on a correlation between the math data and IAR. So IAR is the Illinois Assessment Readiness State Assessment that they take every year. So, if a student performs on the map test and is ranked in the 60th percentile or above, they are more likely to score a four or proficient on the Illinois Assessment Readiness. So that's where we got that 60th percentile. Um, right now, this goal's pretty lofty. 80% at the 60th percentile, that's not a score that we really, we haven't reached. And we're not probably going to reach by the end of spring. But I wanna talk about why we're looking at that number and why that number is important. Um, because that IAR data is what is accessible to community members. It's what we are, our designations are determined by for excellent, commendable, targeted, those types of information. So we want our kids scoring that 60th percentile. However, that is only targeting our high students. So when I'm going through this presentation, I'm gonna talk about students that are in that 60th percentile, but that's only a portion. Our other students that are performing, um, in these lower percentiles, in the reds and oranges, their individual growth goals are more important to them because they're not, they're not going to be the ones that change this. And so when you're looking at this, this chart, whatever you wanna call it, bar graph, um, we have all 233 students represent.
Six, seven and eight, right?
Um, yep, yep. Of all, so of all the kids in the junior high, um, ranked in the percentiles. And we have the percentile key. So, the 60th percentile is going to be this green and this blue. Okay? As well as a very small portion of the yellow. So sometimes you may look at this and see the percents not add up. It's because we had one or several students that fell in the yellow that are the 60th percentile because of that band. So, just something to keep in, keep in mind, if something doesn't add up, that's why there's probably a kid that fell in that yellow. So you will also hear me talk about the shift of colors. So we are gonna be looking specifically at moving the kids from the yellows to the greens, the greens to the blue, as well as trying to limit the number of kids in this red and trying to pull them up. This is all kids, including IEP students. Also important to keep in mind. So, right now, we only have 38% of our students performing in that green or the blue in that 60th percentile. So, that's our, that's our base. But I did break it down to each grade level. So here's our sixth grade reading data. So in the fall, we were at the 37, 37% of our students are performing in that green or the blue. And this chart here shows the specific numbers of the breakdowns. So, by looking at this chart, we know that we have quite a few kids here that are in that 21st to 40th percentile. And those kids are kids that we could easily move up to be yellow. And that's how that shift happened. So then we want to move up some of these kids here and, and so on. We took, we did get our winter data for, um, reading. It's not every single kid. We are still doing makeups right now. But I have, we have enough of them finished that I was like, let's, I'm gonna share it and show you guys where we're at. So, right now, 45% of students. So, after I get through the end of the reading data, I'll show you the shift in colors. But I, I was pretty happy with that already. That's a good jump. But that also, keep in mind, are kids that are moving probably from the yellow to the green majority. Uh, I did include, um, in that packet as well, um, what their growth goals were because I, like I said earlier, I think it's important to talk about the individual goals and growth goals of students. So for sixth grade reading, we also have 52% of our students meet their individual growth goals. Um, and 66% of students may grow. Those are both numbers that I would also like to see at 80% because 66% of students meeting, making growth is great. However, that is still a large chunk of students that did not show any growth on their math scores. Um, so that's something we need to look at, what students didn't make growth, why didn't they make growth? Are those kids getting interventions at this point or not? Um, and that's another thing, when we look at, at these colors, we determine what students get, small group instruction or interventions with Mrs. Troygan or during our MTSS time, based on these numbers here. So we look at what kids are falling in, below the 21st percentile. Um, we look at which kids are, already have IEPs in place. And if a student is falling in that area and doesn't have an IEP, then we know that that's a kid that we need to be giving extra support for. Mr. Here's our seventh grade. Um, right now, we're at 36% in the fall of students that are falling in that green and blue. Um, when we took the winter assessment, we were at 46. So a 10% growth, um, in students in that green and blue. I'm pretty happy with that as well. Um, if we can end the year close to 50%, I'll be happy for the year. Um, and then next year, we'll reevaluate. Um, my goals team, we already are sitting down and looking at more like benchmarks of how do we wanna get to that 80% and what do those benchmarks look from year to year, um, ultimately knowing that's our end goal. Oh, I was gonna also, I don't hear you talk about that. Um, so eighth grade, 42% of students are in the blue and green. Um, we also have, I'll show you this on the next page. Um, but we have a good chunk of kids that are in the yellow that are all potential students to move up. Um, so that's coming from a lot of tier one instruction as well. And the yellow is what can we do in our tier one instruction to bump those kids and how can we challenge them more? You will also see, now this is where, this is interesting. Eighth grade, we only went from 42 to 43. And I say it's interesting because we had 59% of students meet their growth goals. But yet we only saw a 1% increase in that. That is because the students that made the most growth in this particular group were the students that were already in the red and the orange. So when students are in the red and the orange and they're making the growth, arguably that's just as important, if not more important. But we're not gonna see it in this growth because we're seeing it here. And I'll show you that on the next page. So here we have, this is basically all the data that I just talked about, shown in bar graphs from fall to winter. So you can see here in the eighth grade what I was just talking about, the green and blue did not change hardly at all. However, we went from 31 to 40% in the yellow. And that's students that came from that orange and red, which I'm very happy about. So even though the data only shows a 1% increase, you see an increase that is substantial. I do love to be able to see the progression. One thing that I do wanna look at, that the data doesn't show, is that we went from 10% to 15% in the red for sixth grade reading. So now we have some new kids targeted for interventions. And with teacher conversations, that's also how they're performing in the classroom. We have some students that we know are needing more support. So, this is a perfect way to get them some more interventions by looking at that. So that's the reading data. Questions on reading?
Their growth goals are set on math.
Yes.
Very individual growth goals are set on math, so she talks about that. That's all norm as well, so that's a big, so that's, in fact, that's computer generated. So they, they'll say, you know, a student in this particular range should have a growth goal based on average. I mean, that can be difficult for a lot of students, so I'm 60-some percent.
Yeah.
I've been very positive.
Yeah, so. Yeah, that's reading. Um, math, goal is basically the same. I'm gonna talk about it the same way I just talked about reading, the same 8%, same 60th percentile. Um, out of our 233 students, we're at only 33% of our students that are performing above the 60th percentile. So again, a long way to go to where we wanna be. However, um, when we look at the breakdown, there's a lot of positives within it. So sixth grade, we're looking at our fall data, 21% of students that are in the green or the blue, which if you look at the numbers, is only 16 students, um, out of our 75 and 76 in sixth grade. When we look at our winter data, 30% increase, so good growth. Um, when you look at our sixth grade, this I was actually very pleased with as well. So for their growth goals, we had 68% of students meet their, their growth goal. And we had 83% of students make some sort of growth. So I'm happy with 83. I mean, they are growing. Seventh grade, we started at 31%. And at winter, we are at 37%. So again, this, one thing to note about seventh grade when you look at this math data, is we have a pretty high needs group when it comes to math. We know that. We already have extra supports in those classrooms. And we have an extra MTSS group that's working with those kids. Um, because they are, they struggle a little bit more than our other grade levels when it comes to math. Eighth grade, I was really, really excited about eighth grade. Um, so in the fall, we were at 45%. In the winter, we're at 60%. Yes. We had a huge, huge jump when it came to, um, our eighth grade math data. Now, that comes from though, how many students we had in the yellow. We already had 23 students that were already falling in the 56th percentile, 57th percentile, 58th percentile. Those are, those are easy wins for us. We can easily pull those kids up. So it'll be, I'll be curious to see how much growth we see from winter to spring because those kids have already been bumped up. Um, and trying to move the kids that are in the orange and the red to the green, not necessarily realistic. Um, and then for growth goals, 82% of students met their math growth goal and 85% of students made some sort of growth. So, very happy with that. Again, you'll see, um, the trends, the greens and yellows growing. One other thing to think about with, um, math in particular, I know we've had conversations in the elementary land that we know that, well, there's changes that could be made to curriculum. Um, but I will say, I'm not getting into cohort data. The cohort data is very interesting when you follow a sixth grade class. There's 67th and eighth grade, you track the data. In math in particular, we do see that the longer the students are in the junior high, the more green and blue that we are seeing. Um, so even if they are, we're still catching them and we're bringing them up. So that, we, we do have some success in math and I'm very pleased with that. Um, so those are my math goals. Any questions on math?
Do you have a, um, math curriculum or you're still?
We're using Big Ideas. Um, we bought it last, we have the Big Ideas.
I couldn't remember.
And, and Big Ideas, it's, it's a challenging curriculum. It's rigorous. Um, when kids, they get to us in sixth grade, it's often harder than where, it's, they, they're not there yet. Um, so our sixth and seventh grade teachers work really, really hard. Um, and sometimes grades, kids, it's eye-opening. They get to sixth grade, they get to seventh grade and they start to see realistic, like, oh wow, this is grade level content. I'm not there. And it's, it's eye-opening to kids and parents, um, but it is working. And seventh grade to eighth grade, seventh grade math is hard. We have, we have that conversation all the time with parents. You have to understand that yes, it is hard, but it is not bad that it's hard. It is okay to be challenged. It is okay to see grades that are not A pluses. They'll get it. And, and that is a conversation that we continuously have because when they get into eighth grade, a lot of the content is the make, it's mastery of content. And then you're adding in little bits of layers that's here. But seventh grade is the introduction to a lot of concepts that they have not been introduced to before. They're adding algebra and fractions. They're adding algebra and fractions and exponents and then, yeah, it's layers. So, uh, my third goal is, uh, social emotional learning. So we've all talked about SEL goals. So, for the junior high, this is the very first year that we've done, uh, the DASSA self-report screening. So it is a assessment or survey that the students take themselves. So, I went in, Mrs. Ray's and I went in each classroom and we administered it. But we went in and we said, "Hey, you guys are gonna take the survey today. The survey is about, um, your thoughts, feelings, emotions and how you problem solve. You're going to rate yourself on a scale, um, rate yourself on what do you think about these questions?" Um, and so there's 37 questions and it's that classic rating scale of never, rarely, sometimes, often and almost always. Which that alone for kids, they don't always, they don't know, understand what it means to rarely or sometimes or often. So I, I take this data as a baseline of like, this was the first time. It's great. It's really good data. 89% of students rated themselves in the typical or strength on this. It's great. Is it realistic? I'm not sure. Um, it's, and, and the questions are kind of, they're thought provoking. They're kinda hard. I brought some questions just to kind of think about like, the things that we're asking the students. Can I describe the things that matter most to me? Can, do I listen to feedback so I can improve? Do I seek feedback from others? Or do they know what feedback is? Do they know that they're asking for feedback? I can list personal traits that are most important to me. You know, I think it's great conversations to have and I think it's really good for them to start thinking about these things. But when you're talking about, you know, developing a positive sense of, positive sense of self, managing relationships. But when you're talking about, you know, developing a positive sense of, positive sense of self, managing relationships and social conflicts, mindsets and goals, thoughts, emotions and decisions, those are things that are pretty high level thought processes. So I'm actually okay if this eighty-nine percent goes down because I think that it shows that students are becoming more realistic with their person. You know, like they're more realistic. If we can talk to kids and have them understand what these things mean, rather than just saying always, almost always, often, let's think about it. Do you actually know what feedback is? Do you actually accept feedback? So though I have eighty-nine percent with a goal of ninety percent, if we maintain I'm good, it's more conversation based and let's figure out how this assessment goes. They're going to take this again on January twenty-first. So we'll see what happens. We have a weekly lesson about SEL and Mrs. Reyes works with some kids and pulled groups with it. So we'll see what that data looks like.
Right, you can do this three times.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and again, with it being our first year, the kids have never done this before. At, at Angelia, the teachers do the rating. This is the first time the kids rate themselves. And I'm, I'm glad that our students think very highly of themselves. Very confident about their skills. But if we can teach them along the way and that number goes down, I'm not going to be super upset. The last goal and last area that we've been talking about, I need to go number three again. Goal number four is career and college readiness. So this kind of comes from that conversation we were having last spring with Ralph? And we talked a lot about college readiness and how we know that's something we'd like to focus on. So that's where this stems from. So by the spring of twenty twenty-five, sixth, seventh and eighth grade students will participate in a real world career and college readiness experience. So that's why I said it's not super data driven. It's just experience driven. So eighth grade, you got to go to John Deere Denver Works and those are our two pictures on the top. So they did that in November. We split them up into two groups. And they got to tour John Deere and ask questions. They got to learn about the different tracks to become employees of John Deere. They got to, is it watch the line? And the kids had a great time. The kids loved it. I, we had a lot of kids that were very excited to go and even the kids that were like, oh, that's not for me. I think across the board, everyone enjoyed their time there and learned a lot and it was, it was good. So that was eighth grade. Seventh grade, got to go to Finance Park just last week. On Monday of last week, the seventh grade students participated in a simulation. So this, I think some of you guys have done BizTown interviews and whatnot. So this is step two of BizTown. So BizTown focuses on community and learning about the community, how it works. Finance Park is more personal finance based and like more individualized. So they have a three week long curriculum that Mrs. Rowe taught in seventh grade and it was about what are taxes? How do you, what is the idea of taxes? What are property taxes? What is insurance? Why do you have to have insurance? What is life insurance? What is a Roth IRA? What is a 401K? Why do we need these things? How do I get to retirement? What are student loans? So some of it, I will say, a little bit above their heads, but it was the first time they do it. And then when they become freshmen, they do.
They can take personal finance.
They can take personal finance.
And then seniors take consumer.
Yeah. So I think it was a good exposure to it. So they have three weeks of that and then they go to Finance Park, which is now they've just moved it down to the vibrant, where the old Sam's Club was. So that's, that's BizTown and Finance Park now. And they spend the whole day, they get assigned a persona and then that persona is dealt the life. And they have to budget and finance and make all the decisions that they would have to make for that person. So we had a lot of seventh graders come back saying, wow, kids are very expensive. And we said, couldn't remember that. So it was, it was a great experience. Kids liked it. Kids got to get out of their building. It was a very heavily academic day, so I won't say we had as positive feedback as John Deere. But it was still a good day. And so I am looking for something for sixth grade to do. I don't, I don't know what to do with them yet because they're still, still young and a little bit more immature as they come to the junior high. So I, I have a hint to do too, like, just to, so if anybody has ideas or hears of things that we could get our sixth grades, sixth grade students to. I'm looking out any suggestions? Questions about? That's all I got. I'm sorry. That was probably longer than I was expecting.
Very interesting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Ready for the financial reports?
All right. So you see that the treasury bill, we reinvested those funds in the treasury bills. You might notice that the O and M is down a little from what, how we've been investing it previously. We're using up more of those funds in the cash on hand, even to make sure we have plenty of for the rest of the year. So we put about five hundred thousand back into our regular cash account and then to offset that, we invested an additional five hundred thousand in the head month. So we're investing the same, you know, the additional five million, just a little differently amongst those two funds. And then if you look at our fund balances at the end of the month, you'll see that we're still looking really good for those funds we want to commit for the upcoming projects, which we will discuss a little bit more about in the next month or two about actually committing those funds to the screen them so they're ready to go. All right. And then looking at revenue and expenditures, we did receive our last, our last Mercer County company tax in November. We have one more left for Rock Island County. So you'll see that those revenues are high these first six months of the year, but you'll start seeing those decline a bit as expenditures will start to rise. So.
So are we all square with Mercer County now?
Share the letter they'll be sending out to the Rock Ridge residents that live in Mercer County explaining their mess up of the last year's.
They're collecting impact, that's right.
Some really.
No, no, see it. Because basically what they use, they use the prior years. Instead of using what should have been.
Our, the prior bond.
Prior bond, I'm sorry.
Before we refinanced it. So, and we didn't sign off on it. We asked them to fix it before the bills. And they technically need a signature from us confirming that it's right.
Before they're submitting.
Yeah. So I'm, they've got to fix that. So.
Board puts them.
Sure. And looking at our projections, our revenues are coming in a little bit quicker than we've seen previously, which is why you're seeing that surplus from our budget is a little bit higher than what we typically see this time of year. I think it's mostly due to the timing of our investments. We've seen that big investment income when those bonds matured, where that was later in the year in previous years. So I can guess it's a timing of when some of those non-recurring revenues are coming in. So. And then in operations and maintenance and transportation, our projections are under two hundred thousand from what we budgeted. So we're, we're looking good and on track on those funds. You'll see on the interest at Black Hawk Bank and Trust that again, the interest rate dropped to under four percent, so at three point nine three. You also might notice that that total interest income for Black Hawk is down quite a bit, but we removed, removed five million out of there. So I'm, I'm surprised that you guys go down. And then in looking at the investment report, we've locked into that four point two seven to four point two nine range. That will mature in May, which is really good timing for when our project classes are going to be here and we can reevaluate how much we have on hand before we reinvest, reinvest going forward. We might also want to discuss kind of alternating, you know, doing so much so that we have some maturing more quickly than six months, which might mainly hold off a bit, but it is on a set goal. So, you know, we have the same amount invested, but it's come falling off.
Right.
Available to us as we.
Yeah, I assume Todd and Andy can help us with the other maybe a cash flow thing. Prediction. It's a survey, a statistical graph survey and try to do some different things with that because of the S. But that just happened here in the last week or so.
It's still going.
It's still going. They were on site today.
Were they? I just saw the other day when I was on fire then.
Yeah.
Print some stuff.
It's been pretty regular.
Last, last week I go. So that was, it was your birthday last week.
Thorough.
They brought on drones.
Yeah, they did. They brought up drones.
They may be around and brought a bunch of drones. It's like the technology, that would be.
Cause they're not yet. They're doing a lot of old school, you know, with tripod and the, you know, the traditional survey methods.
Keggerons, squad. Paint dots around.
Yeah, paint dots.
All right. Lastly, food service report. We're just about breaking even. So we'll, we'll see. I would expect December might not look as favorable. We'll price a receipt to go down a bit since we're going to break, but those payroll expenditures are still going to be there and maybe less, a lot of costs. But we also should see that turn around and gain the rankings where we're at in the year. So.
Half the year, I'd say it was.
Especially with that. Right.
Who bumped up the cost a little bit? I'll say that we just had a food service audit, but can present a little bit more to that. But one of those things that came up was we are still below what who was it? The groups of one that is basically, you're basically saying we should probably start showing that we're increasing by like ten cents a year is what the, our food prices and what's our, our lunch. Not that we have to, but that is a recommendation to do it. But that's something we can share up to January. And that's something to do that year is just like, hey, this is what we'd like to see. All the, like, payments and the rest of that going to the minister?
Staff, Johnny, the, all of us staff members that we pick out right now.
There you go. Cause I don't ever have your cash.
I would say about half of the winter athletes pay their activity fee online versus check their cash in person. So maybe more than half.
Good. Very good. Any other questions for Jamie? Thank you. All right. FOIA requests. Yeah, I saw we got that. That was in my.
We get that every like four to six months. I feel like we do two or three a year.
Very good. All right. Join the annual conference.
Well, just you and I. I even had some stuff typed up because I'm like, oh, I'm so excited.
You were there.
Yeah, Eric, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You were there too. But I felt it was, I loved it. They said six hundred and ninety school board out of eight hundred and forty school board attended and that was, or schools. Yeah, that was the highest. And then they presented the new Vision twenty thirty that I'm sure we'll be talking about. The first speaker was a, he was a music instructor and I found out that you can get a Grammy for being a music educator. I had never known that. And it took him a long time, twenty years, he said.
Not gonna have it again. Maybe in January you can bring the Grammy. What's it gonna take?
Which in the Saturday, the speaker was, his main point was trust matters and I did get him a book. And he signed it. Very interesting, very interesting. So if I ever have time to finish it, I'll share it. I did the dual enrollment scaling for impact. Of course, this was up in Arlington Heights. So they, they had like seven different colleges that their main goal was to try and get, ensure eighty-five percent of its three thousand students annually earn college credits. They figured, they have career pathway models that I've heard of that seem interesting. I didn't know whether, I know we have Black Hawk, maybe in the future, Western or something like that. I don't know. Then I went to a framework for inducting, retaining, supporting teachers and these women were very good. That was probably my favorite. Both have really high retention rates. And the good books that were suggested are Teach Like a Pirate and Stick Together, A Simple Lesson to Build a Stronger Team. I thought those two books looked really interesting if you're interested. I'll probably order those two because that's how I roll. And then my last one was Eric Till or no? Oh, and then Mandate Matters. You know, I've done that. I guess there's a Senate bill that's going to be filed in January, looking into the school code and trying to get rid of organize, reorganize and reduce the number of educational mandates. So we're supposed to just keep after the legislator.
That's a state, Senate.
Yeah, state senate. Her name was Senator Meg Loughlin Apple. But she's not the one who's doing it. She's going to be the second person. I forget who the first one is.
And that's a big push through Vision twenty thirty as well. Was they showed a picture of, two thousand and ten, the mandates was about this big. And last year it was like three bucks that size of the mandates that, I'd say the one for school, just for schools. Anything else? Just for schools. Yeah, as long as they're funded, they're not near as not. But the ones that aren't funded, the ones that.
Or the real old ones, they want to try and get rid of.
Yeah, there's a, I mean, all the works training came out when, beginning of this month and I mean, it's giving back what the mandated requirements are for training for staff members every year. And it's the same stuff year after year for the most part. There's some that go every other year or every third year, but for the most part it's, it takes up a lot of staff time. And I, I guess I grasp the understanding of why. But I also struggle with timing of everything. So how much of that stuff makes our staff better and how much of it is, you want to tell them what is for you and what are your education or agriculture or financing, banking, whatever. There are a whole lot of annual trainings and mandates that are no more than checking boxes. A little more pathogens, catalyzing stuff. What else is up there?
Fire extinguisher.
Fire extinguisher safety.
And this is every year or?
Nobody's immune. I'm interested to hear about that.
I just had a couple of tips to add on to the thanks, Laura. You did an excellent job summarizing just a couple of the highlights. And first, thank you to all the board members to attend and supporting and financially. An excellent conference, wonderful speakers, lobby, knowledge sharing, you know, meeting our colleagues across the state of online. Well, one of the ones up, and I'll take up some of my stuff I haven't taken up yet, but one of them was PR in small schools. Reverend Rome was there and they were talking about the. Uh, Reverend Rome was there, um, and they were talking about the annual newsletter twice a year. Um, now I'll send some information on that, but, um, anyway, just another data point, you know, a little bit of some of that communication or comparative. Um, the big thing, you know, I sent out the presentation on the Fulton High School, um, kind of like a, um, I'd write a lot of a way for kids to experience construction, uh, just some, and I'll type this up to and send out, but they did, um, they had two students that it was part of an interview process, so a lot of the good things, you know, for us, uh, developing interview skills and things like that. Uh, but, uh, those two students were two days a week, uh, one hour per day, they got paid fourteen hour, fourteen dollars per hour, and that was shared between the school and the, uh, I think it was more like the construction management company. Um, but anyway, just, uh, another data point on that, um, also they talked, you know, a lot about, uh, you pass to the hot topics, like, you know, we talked about some of the bullying or catalyze, um, and it was one of the interesting things, it's nice, so we already noticed, but, um, yes, Department of Education has a toolkit out there for AI too, you know, like how to get all AI and how it's being used in a classroom or, or, you know, what it involves, and so I didn't probably go all over that, but that was interesting to me. But anyway, those, those are kind of the highlights.
We actually had training with junior high school with AI, and I think it was really, really, really well received. There's a number of training.
That's on growth from the learning technology.
I O T C.
L P C.
Eric, um, this is Hassan, this is Bounce on Candy, and I'm Matt, and John, a little bit. Had a little tech issue, but anyway, Matt about, um, providing opportunities for our students, um, to work honestly with Hodge during this time.
And I'm just really excited about it, and they, uh, they definitely are on board with working and allowing, uh, placement of five-ish of our co-op, our work-based learning students, um, next year and the year after. Uh, they would be employed by Hodge. They said, obviously, if they were a hundred and eighteen, they'd probably have to call them office help.
Right.
Or shop workers, um, for liability and union type issues, um, but that they would be more than welcome to shadow, come to construction meetings, learn everything, not only in the trades part of it, to observe what's going on on the site, but Andy was really excited about giving them experience on the construction management side of things, you know, with, with the paperwork and the request for proposal process and the, the Pay Corps, um, submittal process and, and getting kids who might be pre-engineering or pre, you know, some of those areas, some, some really relevant experience as well.
Sounds like that could be kind of a year-round kind of gig.
Yeah, and he, uh, he said, you know, he says they could, you know, we would do the fifteen, cause our co-op kids, our work-based learning kids, take the class here, um, five days a week, um, that teaches job skills, all different types of job skills, um, that's taught through our Hag Industrial Tech, uh, department, um, and then they have fifteen hours a week on the job. So they're released early every day and they go and put in fifteen hours a week of paid employment. Um, and Hodge is willing to, Andy was willing to make that happen, um, and that then during summertime, they could be elevated to summer interns, um, and pick up more hours, um, and even if, you know, somebody was really on board with it and went off to college, you know, there's a built-in internship opportunity that they could jump right into and, and so he was really excited about it, and there we are too.
Gives them a chance to find some really good people young.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's, it's a win-win PR-wise, you know, for sure.
Oh, thank you. Oh, that's great.
Well, the one to the first breakout was a, so you're building a new school, which talked about construction management and all those other things. And obviously it was, uh, it was a lot, um, glad I sat in on it, but it was a lot and all the different bidding processes and the actual construction pieces of it, and went to all the architects and engineer and all this other stuff. Uh, I would say it's a little on my head, um, but I'm glad we have Andy and Todd and all those guys to help me, so I appreciate that. Uh, second one I went to was, um, Parkland. Um, so Parkland High School just went down in April, uh, it's about. Oh, a while ago. Anyway, um, it was just how it's, Parkland, Florida, uh, it was just how it was left the day it happened. Um, and so there was a superintendent from the line of blocks, a teacher from around that area, and then somebody from, um, his beat went down and actually toured the building, had a deal signed in and all this stuff, and, um. They never had class in there?
Yeah.
After.
They never claimed backpacks or picked up books or computers or?
Yeah, what was that kid?
On the tables, one of them was open, Chromebook's open, backpacks. You know, they talked about the student had all the assistance that you could possibly get them. It was, it was very interesting, but as soon as they turn eighteen, all that assistance kind of goes away, so I didn't, and I've heard that from another person around this area, uh, talk about that. It's once they're adult, you don't really fit in this area, which are not bad enough to, for us to really help get here, so you're kind of in no man's land, hopefully you don't do anything bad, and we'll call it even. So that was kind of, it was interesting, and that's a rough, that's, that's a big piece of the puzzle we're missing society-wise.
Right.
Um, basically outdoor, outdoor doors, not open. Um, big thing, uh, the kids that were saved or the classrooms had doors that were locked. Three stories, up and down, up and down, up and down, um, so, um, that was, that was a big takeaway was, you know, if you want to talk about safety, your exterior doors locked, your grandeur doors locked, simple then.
I'll make it easy.
Right.
Make it easy. And they, there was a lot, there was a few other things that I, I don't want to present here, but all the things that we're looking into, you know, come January, we're doing a big safety, um, I don't know what you call, upgrade initiative. Roll out, deal that we're, we're moving definitely across the district, um, working with a group. Very happy that we've got this all rolling. It's just like, I think we're just heading, we're just kind of a tip of the iceberg, but I think it's a great start for us moving forward. Uh, then the second and the one right after that was basically a small district up by Aurora. Um, basically coordinating efforts with their resources, what they have there. Aurora resources are a little bit different than, uh, Rockbridge resources, but it, it is coming back to know the relationships with the fire department, police department, uh, they have SWAT team, they have hospitals, and they have four within like ten miles of the whole kind of the deal, so, um, overall it was really good. Well, and a lot of people, man, so it was good. Appreciate you letting us go.
I'll mention, you talk about the safety thing too, uh, John, working with JJ, that we do have those door sensors installed and up and running now, and it's interesting from, you know, our desks, we can look up and I can see what doors open, exterior doors.
Yeah, and then Debbie Rasso's office has a new TV as well, that anytime a door opens that.
And our, my secretary's office does as well. When a door opens, her camera switches to that door. So you, so you can see the view both inside and out.
That's every exterior door.
Every exterior door in the district.
Oh, is it district?
Oh, yeah.
Every door.
Okay.
The main.
Like, not that one.
Like, some of these doors like are not, like this door is not, like the shop door, if you go around, the front door is there around here.
Any of the doors that have card readers on them?
Yeah, every door that has the card swit, has.
Yeah.
Interesting, cause one of the buildings we went to today, every classroom has.
Card reader.
Every.
Every classroom, right?
Yeah, I'd say both of them, um, that all the doors were locked. Every door was shut, that was, was locked while the classroom was going on. The one had key cards, the one the guy had to like unlock and loosen. But the key card was really nice, and that was an aftermath installation, they said, um, and that was because they always keep their doors shut and locked. Um, they have some pretty awesome collaboration space, but as kids were coming in and out, someone had to go let them in, and so this allows, um, other people to like, other staff members to tag them in and out of the room, so, um, there were some pretty cool security features that. At the buildings for sure.
Sorry, I kind of got a little off topic there.
That's fine.
That was joining the conference, so. Andrew, I appreciate you letting us go.
Yes.
All right, debt limit discussion.
Yeah, uh, so about the finance committee, uh, John said he asked about, uh, whether we want this thirty-three million dollar bond, uh, to count towards our debt limit or not really. Um, I asked, was there any reason that we wanted to? He said, no, but I have to ask. I said, okay, then I'll ask, and so here we are. So, yeah, so that was part of the reason to go into a referendum was.
Yes.
That didn't have to go on our debt limit, so I think our, our guidance to, I didn't speak up, uh, Eric or Lori, if you have any concerns or whatever, but our guidance to John and Marcus was, uh, no, don't put on our debt limit.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't want to do it in the hamstring of the future board, if we don't have to, so.
Sounds good.
Graduation requirement update.
Yeah, um, you've got a memo and some documents that were in your packet, but I'll just talk briefly through them and, and for everybody else here. Uh, back in October, I shared, um, some information that I gathered with some surveys and some, uh, information from other schools who do and do not allow early graduation. Um, at that point, the board gave preliminary approval and direction for me to move forward with those necessary changes. Uh, we talked additionally with the Rockbridge faculty at our S I P day on October thirty-first. Uh, so at this point, I'm prepared to recommend that the board amend our graduation requirements to allow early graduation after the seventh semester. So that is an action item, um, later tonight, um, to ask you to approve. Um, a few bullet points to go along with that. Because the state has an eight semester, sorry. The state has a, um, eight semester requirement of English, they're gonna have to double up. Um, so students will have a few options that Ann will be discussing with them during registration next month. Uh, we've created a new class, um, called English for A Real World Communication. Um, it'll take the place of our Rockbridge Public Speaking Course, but be expanded a little bit more in terms of all different types of, as it says, real world communication, resumes, cover letters, professional emails, you know, person-to-person, uh, verbal, uh, communication and all those types of things. So they can either, um, they can double up with that class, um, or they can take dual credit English and regular English simultaneously, or they can take, um, either the dual credit or the regular English and dual credit speech simultaneously. So they're gonna have to double up at some point. Um, most will probably do it during the fall of their senior year, but we would allow that to happen if, as we get in future years, if they could do it in their junior year, they could take this real world communication early if they wish. We don't think many will, they'll plan for it, but they probably won't take it until that seventh semester. So English is one thing. They will have to double up, cause we have an eight semester, a state requirement of PE, so they'll have to double up on a PE credit, take two PE classes at once during some semester. Um, a few notes, um, students who graduate early will not be eligible for any extracurricular sports or activities during that eighth semester. That includes all sports, FFA, music, theater, clubs, and prom. Um, they can attend prom as a guest of a current student, um, but they basically, they graduate, they lose their status. They do get to walk, uh, or they'll have the option to walk at our graduation ceremony in May, but if they choose not to, they'll get their diploma and be on their way. It's up to them. Um, Mrs. Pontek has created a preliminary checklist and permission form. Thank you to Monmouth Roseville High School that we stole it from, and adapted it for our needs, um, and that was included in your packet of just some of the different things that we'll have to check off the list. Um, students and their parents must complete that permission form no later than May first of the junior year, um, so they have to decide early. Uh, Ann's gonna start that process with kids, uh, in January, like we always do for course selection, um, so this is gonna be rolled out to them, and they'll have to start deciding on it, understand what the different components are, and sign off on it by May first. Um, once they sign in, we talked about this back and forth, and we're like, well, can they back out? Yeah. Um, but it's gonna require a meeting with the students, the parents and administration, um, if they decide to change their mind and, and stay for that eighth semester. Uh, we did put it in place that if they take that real world communication course, it only counts as their eighth semester of English if they graduate early. They can't take it, they can't double up seventh semester and then decide to change their mind and then coast second semester and say, well, I'm gonna have to take an English second semester? No, they'll have to take English four. So, um, those are the, those are kind of the bullet points, and, uh, like I said, I shared those documents with you, and, um, basically at this point, we're ready to roll this out with your approval to, uh, amend our graduation requirements as noted.
You'll start introducing this at freshman orientation?
We will, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, we'll start, and we'll do it with the current freshmen, sophomores and juniors, um, to, to make it available for next year. Um, and then when I meet with the eighth graders sometime in January, um, I'll introduce it to them, and then obviously the new principal will talk about it freshman orientation in August.
Guess not too late to back out.
So, yeah, so that's where we're at with it. Um, you know, I, I think there is, I don't know how many will truly take advantage of it. I think there, there is a, a population of students that this would be good for them to, and I think staff members here would agree, there's a population of students that are ready to move on, and that's okay. Um, I, you know, I, I know some, Mr. Rowe had some concerns with his music folks, cause they hit their contest in March, and their big musical in May that they wouldn't be able to do, um, after committing a large amount of time to these kids and you finally get to be seniors. I don't think that's the kind of kid that's gonna move on and graduate early. Um, the athlete, the spring athlete, I don't think is gonna be the kid who's gonna graduate early and give up their, their like second half of their winter sport or their spring sport. Okay, the D-one football player that's somewhere hidden in our student body. Um, you know, that might be the kid, you know, because you see that, that some of those elites, football players will graduate early, get enrolled in college to play spring ball, while they should still be a senior in high school, but that's, that's a rare. A rare one that Rockbridge has never seen. Um, so. But it's an option. It's an option, and I think it'll be a good option for some kids who are ready to move on to whatever next in their career.
Very good.
Yep. Other questions, anything? Uh, I also have the, yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to see what you were saying. Thank you, Pete, for putting this together. This is all our, this is all together, but this is great for this morning.
Yep, that thing's time. Yeah, it's time. Um, also, um, not, no real discussion, but I also have the course description book updates. Again, it's this time every year that we bring those to you, um, so I've got a summary of a few, um, changes and some course offerings. One thing I do want to highlight is, uh, Mrs. Haigh-Neyroot, um, went to training this past summer, um, to get certified. It's not really a certification, but to get trained, uh, by advanced placement, so we will have an AP chemistry course next fall, um, so students can, uh, take the class all year with her, um, and then in the spring, take the AP chemistry exam with the opportunity to earn some credit that will help them for college as well. So a different avenue than dual credit, but something that we think is another good opportunity for our kids.
Yeah.
Yep, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Miss Henson. All right. At-large board election.
Yeah, uh, I think it was the last board meeting, the board had asked about, uh, the, seeking some more information, guys from, uh, Mr. Green, about potentially changing our, um, district election pieces to just at-large across here. Mr. Green got back to me and basically saying that if you would want it on the April one, uh, for this year, it has to be approved by January twelfth, which is a Sunday, our next board meeting is January thirteenth, so if you got to do something prior to that, have it on the April end, you have a special board meeting, which is fine. Um, but he also talks a little bit more in depth about, um, you know, at-large twenty twenty-seven, uh, that it has to be consolidated on the election toward April first of twenty twenty-five, or the general election on November third, twenty twenty-six. Um, board members would not be elected at large into the consolidated election in the spring of twenty-seven. So, um, there are some more rules, regulations with as far as it can't, you can't prove it now and then wait. Has to be within any year, but no more than seventy-nine days, or less than seventy-nine days, so it's just the really, that the big deal right now is to determine whether you would like to have it on the April, this April one, or wait till November of twenty-six um, to put it on the actual, as a, as a, as a, as a, as a question, yeah. Um, he did say it was a simple majority, but he was gonna look into it, hasn't gotten back to anybody. He, he thought it was a simple majority, and he said that he's had other districts do it as well, um, so, um, just your information, so you tell me what you're gonna do from there.
Well, so, the other thing. Well, so, the other thing, that is if we, if you put it on, if you rush it in and get it on April and it will say passes, then if we have a board vacancy, we can fill whoever. Otherwise.
I'll ask about the vacancy question. Just because if they're elected by township at this point, do we have to? Because like you said, even though if it would pass on in April, the township still holds true until the following, the following board election, which is?
27.
Yes, spring of 27. So that's something, updates in here.
Yep.
Trying to figure out there, but.
Well, yeah. Yeah, we don't know the answer because of that.
Yeah.
Right.
I think we gotta wait until we get that answer.
Well, and before we make the.
I think we need everybody to.
You guys, we need to have seven board members. For it, you know, so I'm, I'm perfectly good tabled this.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
But if you would check on the, if we're filling a vacancy, you know, can we do that before? Well, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if we're not gonna put it on this election. So it's.
But if we do, it'd be nice to know still, yeah.
That's fine. So, I mean, really at this point, it would be, we want, if you decide to go out of this way, your next time to put it on would be the November 26th of election. So it would be, it needs to be approved 79 days before that.
Which would be about September.
You can do it before that, but you can't do it more than a year of that. So it has to be between a year and 79 days prior. And you have to okay that.
So sometime in 26 before August.
We need to.
Yeah, okay.
Eric, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, yeah, I should say, and I realized that I, I kind of benefited from the township thing and getting on the board, but the one of the things, I, I think it would be worth the conversation about the support of pros and cons because I think too, like I ran into a board member from, I think it was Mundling School District, but basically there's kind of like two communities within the school district. Basically, all the school board members are basically from one housing subdivision. And so it's always the extreme case of, of what you, what could happen if the.
Should we do that?
You know, I think we want some diversity of representation. I mean, you know, it could be, you know, we don't want everybody from, you know, all being in the only township, or all being in the, or wherever.
Well, yeah, maybe the system's not broken.
And so one of the things I thought might be like something we may want to consider or ask the board to want is, like, can we have it so that, well, like there's a maximum of three per township unless there's not that many people running for office? That way, you know, if there is a limited number of candidates, you can still fill the board, you know, provided that there weren't enough candidates to, for the rolls to go on effect.
My guess is we can write up whatever we want, whether the voters approve it or not, that's the next thing.
Right, yeah.
Right, just like you.
They might, yeah, but people might still like the, their area.
As Marcus and I discussed, depending on what, what election cycle you put this on, depends on what voters show up.
Yeah. Exactly.
All right, so you want to table this?
Yeah, table this one.
Okay. Hey, one thing, did you ever hear anything more back from our attorney on the B L D D?
Oh, yeah.
We did not, he, because his, his death in the family.
Yep.
He was backed up, but I did ask him to hopefully get it to us by today. I did not receive anything today, don't do you for your receiving. So we did not receive.
So we could table that on the 12th.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, we're gonna have to.
On, on table land in a month, will that hurt us schedule-wise and all? Like, if we need a special meeting?
For like, for your graduation?
For schedule.
I didn't ask.
Or what?
I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know.
Our next meeting is what, January?
13.
I doubt it gets a whole lot down between now and then anyway.
I do.
No, I did ask, I mean, just, you know, he's, he's.
Yeah.
Just backed up, yeah.
He's very backed up.
Yeah. Understandable.
Well, very good, that, any other discussion items? If not, we'll adjourn to close session. Where we talk about personnel, student discipline, the school building, safety, and security. In accordance with Chapter 5, Act 120, Section 2 of the Homeland Meetings Act, the executive session will be held. Any motion to adjourn to closing session?
Still moved.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
He must have left.
All right, you were back online, John?
Back online.
All right, welcome back. We'll, uh, return to open session.
Start with a poll call.
Don Smith.
Marcus Bush.
Lori Lund.
Drew Shear.
Tom Archer.
Eric Johnson online.
John Latola.
Welcome back, everyone. We'll jump into these, uh, action items here. Can I get motion approved the Rockridge High School 25-26 course description book changes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Drew.
Yes.
Eric. Lori.
Yes.
And I will yes. Can I get motion approved recommendation to amend the Rockridge High School graduation requirement to permit graduation after the seventh semester of high school?
So moved.
Second.
Drew.
Yes.
Eric. Lori.
Yes.
And I will yes. Can I get motion approved Sam Nitzel as Rockridge, as volunteer Rockridge Junior High School assistant wrestling coach for the 24-25 school year pending completion of all requirements?
So moved.
Second.
Lori.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Eric. And I will yes. Can I get motion approved Sam Nitzel as Rockridge, as volunteer Rockridge Junior High School assistant wrestling coach for the 24-25 school year pending completion of all requirements?
So moved.
Second.
Eric. Drew.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
And I will yes. Can I get motion approved May Henry as volunteer Rockridge High School assistant boys basketball coach for the 24-25 school year pending completion of all requirements?
So moved. Second.
Lori. Eric. Drew. And I will yes. Uh, can I get a motion to table the approval of the BLDD architect's contract as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Eric. Drew.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
And I will yes. Can I get motion approved the second reading of Press Plus 117 Board Policy Manual Updates As Presented?
So moved.
Second.
Lori.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Eric. And I will yes. And I don't know why Press Plus is so tough for me to say. All right, uh, getting your new business.
Don for putting together everything.
Yes, I always appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, future board meeting, uh, we've got the, uh, 13th, uh, our next official board meeting, and then we've got the 22nd as well, as a special meeting.
And you'll be back to us later on in time on that. Do you have a specific time you wanna look, uh, you want an earlier one? Do you want, uh, five? You wanna, I mean, you wanna stick with the six thirty? I don't know what, what you're thinking on that one, so tell me what time you, you wanna do that special one.
With the people who work, I can do it anytime.
It's a Wednesday.
That is, uh, you know, I'm, we got a lot to discuss that night. We're gonna start at five on I. Normally building grounds is good with five. Normally Eric and Amy are good with about a five-thirty start. That depends what Derek's got going on.
Five-thirty, we're trying to speak further.
You wanna try five-thirty? Yeah, try that. Some of the other groups who don't work for, but I will. But it works for me.
It'll work for you.
Yeah, that'll be good.
All right. I'd like to pay motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Yes. Give me a year. Take some treats off Christmas, please. She'll be sad if she comes in.